The City Council for the City of Rowlingwood will come together in a special city council meeting Saturday, February 10th, 2025 at 10:09 a.m. and we will begin with roll call with Ms. Brown.
Brooke Brown, present.
Alex Robinson.
Evan Gashin on Zoom.
Phil McDuffie.
Sarah Hudson.
Gavin Massengill, there being an in-person quorum of four, and Mr. Gashin on Zoom. We are good for quorum moving on. Any anyone wishing to make comments on items not on today's agenda? All right, and moving on, council, I'm going to pull up real quickly out of order, move to the regular agenda, agenda item number three, discussion and possible action regarding the acceptance of drainage easements for the Hubbard-Hatley-Pickwick Drainage Project. This is our final easement that we've talked about many times. We were able to secure this easement for the Hubbard-Hatley project. This is on the property formerly that we kind of know as the former pre-home property. Very pleased that we were able to get this final easement and it will allow us to do that one little spur on that project. So if I could have a motion to simply accept the easement, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, move acceptance of the drainage easements for the Hubbard-Hatley-Pickwick Drainage Project.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion by Ms. Brown, a second by Ms. Hudson. Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say no, there being five ayes, no nays, motion carries, thank you, council. And on to the main event. We will now go to agenda item number two in the presentation, open discussion with city administrator candidate Alan Thomas. Alan, I'll ask you to come up to the dais, if you would, to the podium. And I think, you know, the portion here in council, my vision here is I'd like you all to have an opportunity just to meet and talk to Alan in person, then we can take as short of a time period to do that, or as long as you would like to do it. And then then we'll go into executive session, I have some discussions with you, and then if we also want to invite Alan back after that for anything that comes up in our executive session, we can do that, and then we'll come back out and possibly take some action. So that's kind of the lay of the land for the day. And with that, Alan, I'd like to recognize you, identify yourself. For the record, I think everyone here has had an opportunity. If you recall, myself and Ms. Hudson met with you on Zoom, we did record that, if you recall, and then we shared that recording with all the council, they've all had a chance to take a look at that and I think have have at least a rudimentary understanding of who you are and your great experience that you would be bringing to the city of Rowlingwood. So but this is our opportunity to kind of do that in person, so if you would, just kind of kick us off and then we'll go from there.
Absolutely, I give probably a similar introduction like I gave last time, so I apologize, I can't remember exactly what I said. Alan Thomas is my name, obviously I'm not from Texas, I was born in Wales and I moved to Austin when I was seventeen, sixteen. And so I was in the mid-nineties, moved to Austin, eventually got married, 2008, my wife and I moved out of the Houston area, which is where her family lives, or her immediate family lives in the Houston area, and we've been down there for a while now, ever since then. So I started out my municipal career, if you could call it that, I guess, as a police dispatcher when I was twenty or twenty-one. I started in the city of Cedar Park, just on the northwest side of Austin here. Started kind of on a whim, this looked kind of interesting, I was working before that in the mailroom at UT, and there's only so much sorting through mail you can get before you realize you might want to do something more with your life. So I thought police dispatching sounded really fun. It became kind of an inadvertent career, I worked there as a police dispatcher for about a decade. I did have time off in the middle for a few years and I went to work at a kind of computing slash IT company off of 2022. And so went back to dispatching, and I was sitting in dispatch one night because I was working the night shift, I quite liked the excitement of working overnight because you catch, you know, more exciting bad guys than in the daytime. And I was looking through the budget and those types of things, I think it's rather unusual perhaps for a dispatcher, and I thought I really should do what the city administrator is doing here. I could do that, I think I thought I could do it quite well. So I did kind of some snooping around, looking at what her credentials were, looking at what her career path was. And then, I mean, honestly, I kind of copied her career. When I got my bachelor's degree in political science and a master's degree in political, in public administration, during my master's degree, I got promoted to work at City Hall and I was the management assistant in the city of Dickinson. And the management assistant was kind of the jack-of-all-trades, the right-hand man for that city administrator at the time. And so she had me doing things like, you know, statistical analyses to back up, to provide data to help guide policy for council, and also things like those issues in certain departments, she'd embed me within that department for a period of time, so I could really understand how those departments were running, where the flaws would be, so we can improve the processes and better serve the public. So during that time, she's a fantastic mentor, so she really helped guide me through what I would need to, you know, be a city manager as I am now and in front of a second city asking for a similar position. And so I think that's really, I have a passion for public service, I have a passion for helping places. I think I said it in my interview when I was online with the mayor and the mayor pro ten, but Rowlingwood may have different problems than I'm used to. I don't know what those problems are, I've looked around, I'm sure I see some minor issues, but I like to improve things. It's nice to, I like to go in a place and make a difference, I also like to be a part of the community. Granted, Rowlingwood is an expensive place, I wouldn't be here all the time, but I most certainly would spend times here, so if we have events at the park, those kinds of things, things that go around, I like to be there because it's one thing to stand in front of you with a suit and tie on saying I'd be a really good city administrator, but it's a lot different, you know, if you're there with shorts and t-shirt one day because you're helping dig weeds out of the park or whatever duties you need to do. So I think it's it's nice interacting with people in a different manner, so they can understand, I'm not just a guy who sits in an office and feels important, I'm a guy who likes to go out there, really become a part of the community and understand what the needs are, so that the policies that you can direct, I can help make sure that those policies are fulfilled. And I think that that's all that I have, but I'm open to any questions.
Yeah, no, that's great, that's a good, a good opener. Council, I'll, I'll open it to you, any other, any questions, thoughts, personal questions, anything that you have, I think it's all on the table.
Well, I'll open, I guess, I'd just like to say thank you, Alan, for applying and for taking the time to be here today, we really appreciate it. I, like you, have a passion for public administration, I happened to spend my honeymoon at the International City Managers Association Convention in Toronto. That may be, that may explain why that marriage didn't work. I knew nothing different. And my ex was a, in the field, was graduate, master's graduate, or yeah, masters in public administration, and so I spent a lot of time with a lot of city managers and a lot of city people as the spouse of my ex. And then have spent my career in the administrative law field, which also deals with mainly public entities on one side or the other of a transaction. So I share that passion, and I think it's a very worthy service. So thank you for dedicating yourself to that. I know it's not, not easy for your family because of the moves that that might entail, but I understand you have three kids, can you tell us about your kids and why Rowlingwood is an interesting for you, interesting possibility for you?
Yes ma'am, so my, my daughter is eighteen, she's turned eighteen, and she's in college, but in like the local community college, kind of close to our house. I have twin sons, they're fifteen this month, so still fourteen, but they're going to be fifteen this month, about to learn how to drive. Rowlingwood's appealing to me.
The mayor can help you with that.
Yeah. I've been there, done that, so.
I've, I've been doing it for a few years and my daughter, I don't know, I think I'm the best coach. My dad was somewhat sarcastic and I use the same approach. No, but Rowlingwood's appealing to me, I mean, as much as I have a slight British accent still, and I know you've just met me, so maybe it's more pronounced when you don't, you don't know me terribly well. But I spent my adolescence in Austin, Austin definitely feels like a place that I'm, I'm more from than Wales. But it's also, I think, the, the values that the community has, and Rowlingwood is so incredibly small, that to be able to have a sense of community in a place that's that small and surrounded by other, from an outside view, potentially similar communities, and to be able to still individualize that kind of community and have a sense of you being your own small city appeals to me. The quality of life in this area, I think, is better than the Houston area. I kind of pushed back a bit, I know this is being recorded, as my wife can watch later, pushed back a bit on the move to Houston, but, you know, my, my in-laws really are lovely people, it was really nice when my children were young to be closer to them. As my children advance through school, the schooling is better in this region than it is in the area in which I am, and I don't believe that that's really a reflection on the school, it's more a matter of finance, and obviously the school financing is a complex issue. But I was afforded a really good education as a child, I don't think without the benefit of that education, I'd be in the position to be speaking to a council in a city of this kind of caliber. I'd like my children to be able to have the same kind of quality of education, so that they can have the opportunities that I've had and hopefully better. So I like that as well for them. You know, I do currently have a position where I live in the city, I have a one and a half mile drive, so one and a half mile commute, that's really nice, I know it'd be a bit more if I were over here, but I think the children would benefit immensely, I think that I have a lot of offer, a city like Rowlingwood, so I can think I can help, I guess, start the work that Ashley had, or finish the work that Ashley had maybe started for me.
Thank you.
Alec.
Yeah, so how do you feel about like, because I know you're, how big is the city that you're, you're currently?
It's approximately fifteen thousand residents and fifteen square miles. So I don't say.
How do you feel about coming from something that's larger to something smaller, like a smaller budget, fewer people?
Our budget is quite small, our budget is certainly smaller proportionately than the Rowlingwood budget. There's, there's pros and cons, of course, I mean, the good thing is, literally, there's so few residents in the city of Rowlingwood that you could actually know what everyone actually wants. So that's, that's, that's quite nice. Fifteen thousand people, quite a lot of them in our community where I work now, disengage for one reason or another. And so I think being disengaged makes it more difficult for us, and it makes it, my job is, seems to be easy, I just try to execute what council would like. But if council doesn't quite know what the community would like, the council doesn't really know in which direction to go, so we find ourselves being pulled different directions. And Santa Fe has a kind of an interesting problem of, it's not terribly wealthy, but it's just wealthy enough to not be poor enough for federal grants. And so it's, you find yourself in that weird loophole of being poorer than if you were actually legitimately poorer. So I think that's quite interesting. So I, the smaller community, I quite like the smaller, close-knit community. A big community, I did say, I think you all saw, I mean, I took the time, I walked ninety-six miles of streets, we have a lot of dead ends, so it really is more like a hundred and fifty miles. And you get the sense of the various communities, I think Rowlingwood's a bit more homogenous as far as, as that, but I, I like that the community is there and it's more, more accessible perhaps to me, when I'm trying to make sure that I'm doing the right thing for what you guys would like.
Yeah, I mean, what do you, what is some of the, like, just on the community side of that thing, like, what, like, what would be your approach to, like, community engagement, building trust with residents, particularly when there are a lot of different opinions on things and contested issues, like, how, how do you think about that?
I try and, for issues that are out in the field, I try to meet the residents where they are. It's one thing to say, come to City Hall and speak to me, but I normally say, oh, there's a drainage issue in your backyard, do you mind if I come over and take a look? Obviously, there are some people who might be more suited for that, I never go and take a look myself, I'm not a drainage expert, so I take whoever the drainage person is along with me, so I can look at that. Sometimes there are people who'd like a solution to a problem and that solution is not necessarily something that's consistent with the vision that the council has, or within the ability of the council to execute, in which case I try and explain through why it wouldn't be possible. Because, of course, the council sets the direction, I have to try and push it in that direction. And usually, I mean, councils, you know, can make mistakes, but there's a reason why there's so many voices, is the mistakes are very, very unusual. And so usually it's, it's right, and so it's easy to say, this is what the reason is why you can't do it. And generally, I mean, I take the time to spend time with them, so I think that spending the time with them and earnestly having a conversation, I mean, everything we do is public, with the exception of a very few handfuls of secret things, so it's great, I get to just be a blank page, here it is, here's exactly everything you want, it's an open book, I guess, not a blank page. But literally, open book, here's exactly what we're thinking, here's all the data that we have, and I'm happy to share it with you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Phil?
Thank you very much, Alan, for coming today. I really don't have any questions, this community is very engaged, as you may find out. And, but I think the great thing about Rowlingwood is that we are so small and so tight-knit that you can get to know all of the components, especially with the approach that you're taking. And so should you get the job, I think you'll, you'll fit in perfectly. So I really don't have anything to add to, to question you about, so I'll move on.
Thanks, Bill. Sarah? I was going to circle back to Kevin.
Okay, I was going to say, I, I think I asked all my questions when we did the previous interview, and we ordered really nice weather for you for your, for your visit.
Yeah, in your interview, yeah.
Today.
Good day for brisk wall.
Yes. I, I was going to ask if he had any questions, so you want to let Kevin go first and then come back?
Kevin, do you have any comments or anything to add?
Um, just comment that we're glad you're here, appreciate your interest in serving, and got a great, very interesting background, so I look forward to getting to know you better and working with you if, if that's the way it goes, but we appreciate you being here and, and appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And now we recognize Sarah, and now you've given him a little chance to ask, think of any questions.
See if, once you, I don't know, when you arrived, if you had the chance to drive around and kind of get the feel of the neighborhood any, but just wondered if you have come up with any questions that you have for us.
I don't believe that I have, I kind of joked when I had my online interview with you that I'd, I'd read all the documents, so those extra clicks were me and not anybody else, so. But no, I've read the comprehensive plan, I've got a good idea of the, the types of things that you have planned and the challenges that you have. Some of those make a lot more sense in the context when you put yourself in the city, as opposed to Google Street View, I re, the topography has lost a bit in Google Street View. So I think, you know, the things like with screening in mechanical on roofs of commercial buildings and things, that makes a lot more sense, where I, I would live in a 2D world, as I joke down by the Gulf Coast, but it most certainly is a 2D world, there is no third dimension. So I think that's pretty apparent, I see where the, the water work, the works are still going on, right, that I've read about at the bottom of one of the hills, I wish I could remember the street name and impress everybody, I can't remember it. But I had a detour around a couple of times, but no, I think it's exactly the community that I believe that it was. We spent about half an hour driving around, so I joked before the meeting with Council member Brown that, don't forget calls, it was me driving around, it wasn't somebody looking to do, do harm. But I think it's fantastic, I mean, one of the, one of the main draws, or one of the other draws I hadn't mentioned, I think I said quality of life, but the outdoor activities in this area is far greater, is obviously a lot more pedestrian-friendly, where I work at the moment, the, the roads are quite narrow, so even though I did walk all of the streets, they're very narrow and there's very deep ditches to the side of it, so it's quite perilous at times with that type of thing. And we have a council in the city who just really has, doesn't have the budget to do the kinds of improvements that Rowlingwood already has. So I really like that you've been able to afford your citizens, including yourselves, that opportunity to be able to get out and about, enjoy the beautiful area that it is, and when it is nice weather, enjoy the weather. I don't think I have any questions, I guess we'll see if you have any for me.
Great, well, thank you. Well, this has been sort of our opening, open dialogue with you. I will take us now to, I will move on to agenda item number four, and we will move to executive session at 10:27. Yeah.